Tonight's forum is being sponsored by the American Association of University Women, AEW, Be The Bridge, and the Charleston Area Chamber of Commerce. My name is Mark Wicks and I'll be your moderator tonight. Questions have come from the public in the form of written questions in advance. We also have paper and pen here. If you would like to write questions to be considered tonight, we ask you to raise your hand, somebody will bring you a paper and pen, and then they'll pick it up, and we have a review committee that will go through it real quick. We ask that, we do not have verbal questions from the audience in order to keep things moving along. So, we want you to ask your questions, please put it in writing, they'll review it, and bring it up here. We want to get as many questions asked as we can. We want to keep them from getting redundant, or something that's just not appropriate for tonight's proceeding. We're joined this evening by our candidates for mayor, Dean Andrews, Matt Lovick, and our incoming council members, Delane Friesman and Jerry Yeager. Jerry and Delane are both running out of votes. However, Mayor Urb, who is in attendance, is retiring after his term this year, after 22 years, so for the first time in a long time, we will have a new mayor. So, yes, can we have a round of applause for Jim Urb? This will be a forum format, not a debate. Each candidate will have the opportunity to respond to every question regarding their particular office as selected by our committee. Responses to questions during this forum will be limited to two minutes. Each candidate will also have two minutes for their opening remarks, and three minutes for their closing remarks. We hope to be wrapped up here by eight thirty, if not sooner, depending on questions, but I see we've had quite a few turned in. With that, we'll get underway. And we'll start. Dean, you want to open up? Give us, you have two minutes for an opening statement.
Well, as Mark said, my name is Dean Andrews. My wife Marcie and I moved to Charles City forty years ago, when I graduated from Dell School at the University of Iowa. I went into practice with Dr. John Heidchisen, and practiced with Dr. Heidchisen for several years until he retired, and then I've been on my own since that time. I have an office in the dental center on the north end of town. Marcie, I have two grown children, Leslie, who lives in Chicago, Illinois, and Kelly, who lives in Denver, Colorado. And we have five grandchildren, including our newest addition, Beckett, who's two weeks old, so we're going to see him this weekend. I've been off the council for the last six years, but prior to that, I was on the city council for eighteen years, and enjoyed my time doing that, and that's kind of one of the reasons why I decided to run for mayor. I've also been involved with many things in our community, many nonprofits. I'm currently on the board at TLC. I've been involved with community revitalization programs since it started in Charles City, and currently I'm on the outreach committee there. I also, I kind of consider myself a glass-half-full type of person. I always kind of try to look for the positives. That's kind of been the focus of my campaign so far, is to look how we can be positive and progressive in Charles City, so I hope tonight to be able to share some ideas with you that kind of illustrate that philosophy that I have. Thanks.
Hello, I am Matt Lovick. I was raised in Charles City. I graduated in 2005. After graduation, I got hired at the Polk County Sheriff's Office, starting as a jailer. Six years later, I got bumped up to a night shift deputy sheriff, and I've been with the office for six and a half years. I'm currently a day shift patrolman now. I am married to my wife Jocelyn. She is a teacher at IC school, and we had our first child, and she will be a year old on the twenty-fifth this month. I still plan on being a full-time deputy sheriff. It's my career. I'm very passionate about it, and I like to serve. Upon coming down to the first shift, I got the opportunity to start looking around, possibly doing more for the community. I saw that mayor was open, but it was going to be up for this election. I went between that and city council and decided if you're going to be part of the city government, if you want to be more involved, why not go for the top seat and try and get the younger generation to be more involved in the community? That's why I'm doing what I'm doing, so that's all I have.
You can hear in the back, is his voice carrying it up? Great. Delane?
My name is Delane Friesman. My wife Jane and I moved here in nineteen ninety-five with our two sons, Lance and Brad. Both the boys live up in the cities now. They've moved on, gone to college and things. Since coming to town, I think there aren't too many different entities that I haven't been a part of, as far as the Chamber of Commerce, community revitalization, served a couple of terms on the school board, got involved in the city council several years ago, and I very much appreciated the confidence that the people of Charles City have shown in me, and elected me to the positions that I have served, that have been elected positions. I kind of like to tell people, I won't promise anybody anything, other than the fact I will show up for meetings, I will be as prepared as I can be, I'll read the information that is presented to me, I'll try and do research if that's needed, and try and make the best decisions that I can. And that's, I feel what I've done in the past, and that's what I will hope to continue to do as we move forward. I think there've been a lot of good things that have happened in the community. I think there have been some ordinances and things like that that have come up in the last few years, that we're trying to help make the community a better place, and we've had some good opportunities with businesses and things like that, and we've tried to show support for them, and, you know, through the TIF program and things like that. So, happy about what we've done, looking forward to continuing that and doing more. Thank you.
Jerry?
I graduated Charles City from IC school in nineteen sixty. My wife Nancy graduated from public school in nineteen sixty, and being the big city we are, we didn't know each other until nineteen sixty-three. So, after college, we lived in Cedar Rapids for three years. We moved back to Charles City in nineteen sixty-nine, where I was employed at Walsh Manufacturing for about ten years, and went out on my own in nineteen eighty. We've been, both been active, Nancy had many years at First Security Bank, and we've been active in the community, in the YMCA. I've been in the YMCA for a number of years back then. I guess we're just been in the area, and I've done a lot of different things. We have two children, one lives here in town, and our daughter and husband live in Hampton, and five grandchildren, so we've just been active in my community, I've been on the council for a number of years, and I think the council, I've been working with, and the administrators, I think we've had some very good administrators. We converted to administrator form of government in nineteen ninety-six, I think ninety-four. But that has worked out very well. We have Don Norson, and Tom Bromlow, and Steve Geers was our administrator. It's been a great form of government, I think we've really enjoyed it, and lucky to have that administrator we had. I also like to stay aggressive, look forward, be progressive, and see this, the community continue to be solid.
We ask in the questions in a rotating manner. Each candidate, again, will have an opportunity to respond to each question. Majority of, I believe, council members have agreed on this, the majority will be focused on a contested race mayoral, but we do have some city council questions as well. And again, we encourage you, if you have questions you'd like to have us consider, raise your hand, and one of the helpers will come get you a paper and pass it, and submit your question. So, very simply, right off the bat, and we'll start with Matt on this one. What is your motivation? Why are you running for mayor?
Kind of like I said in my opening statement, my motivation for running for mayor is I want to move the city forward. I want to create a change within the city government, and give fresh, newer ideas from the younger generation to be involved. I've been following council now for pretty much the past year, and I do believe they are moving forward. I've liked what I've seen, I've liked what I've observed, I want to be part of that, I want to be, I plan on, we plan on living in this community the rest of our lives, and we want to be part of it, and continue to move things forward. What motivates me, we've got a beautiful city, I just want to be part of it, put in ideas, and work with council. That's what motivates me to be part of this community. I enjoy public service, it's just another step that I can be part of something on another level.
Dean?
Well, like I said previously, having served on the city council for eighteen years, I really enjoyed that time, got to kind of know how city government works, what goes on at city hall, and kind of how the things move forward. Like I say, I like to be rather positive, but also need to be progressive. Some of the things that we did when I was on the council that I think were progressive moves, like Jerry mentioned, was going to the city administrator form of government. Charles City is a big enough town, it has a big enough budget, that what, we used to have a strong mayor for our former government, and to have a quote-unquote amateur running the city, just, it just got to be too big of a job. So now we have professionals who lead us in our decisions, kind of give the council and the mayor ideas, and kind of let us know what's going on in other communities also. Some of the other progressive things that I think we did while I was on the council, or while I've been involved with different areas, I was on the council when we did the riverfront development. And I know we caught a lot of heat when we started that, because everybody thought, this is the stupidest idea of spending money I've ever heard of. And since that time, I think it's proven to not only kayakers, but to fishermen, people who just like to go down by the river, it's really, really great improvement. And I personally have had a lot of people come up to me and say, you know, I really didn't think that was a very good idea when we did it, but now that I see it, I think you guys have made a good decision. So, just doing progressive things like that. I was on the bike trail committee from the start. We started with a little trail down by IC Ball Diamonds. We expanded over by the other side of Riverside, and eventually got the whole Charlie Western Trail into a bike trail. So, trying to do progressive things, I have things that will make people want to come to our community and stay in our community, I think is why I want to run for mayor.
Jerry, similar question. What's your motivation for continuing on?
Well, we've done a lot of good things, I think, and we've had challenges, but we've got a lot more to do. Delane and I are both on the Southwest TIF Committee, and we've seen in the newspaper announcements from both Cambridge and Zoetis on some major expansion. And that don't just happen. They're looking at us because we've got a solid background, we've got a solid city, we've got people that have worked in the city. And then there, Cambridge is going to put fifty-five million in, or, excuse me, Zoetis is fifty-five million, Cambridge is twenty-nine million with new jobs, and when they put that money in, it's brick and mortar, it ties out to your community, gives us more assurance that these industries are going to stay with us for the long term. And we've met with these people, and they've been very, very complimentary on Charles City as a whole. So I'm going to stay in that oppressive mode and continue to move that way, and there's other areas that we've got positive things going in too.
Delane?
I guess, every place I've lived, I've been very involved, and I have to thank some of the people that helped me get started. The first job I had was in a bank in Clarksville, and my boss down there, by the name of Wayne Rowling, was very adamant about that. If you're going to do business and be employed in a small town, you need to do business with people in that town, and they need to know you, and they need to know what you're all about, and things like that. And I got involved there, I was a city treasurer for a while, I was on the school board there for a while, we lived there, it was on church council, Lions Club, all those types of organizations, and I really kind of realized that the more you put into life, the more you get back out of it. And you can affect change in a lot of different ways, but if you're really involved and you care about it, you might as well step up to the plate and truly get involved, and serve, and do what you can to make the place you live the best place it can be. You know, is Charles City perfect? I don't think so. I think Charles City is a great place, but I don't think any place is perfect. You know, there's always something that you can improve on, no matter where you are. But I think if you want to truly try and make everything better, you need to put yourself at a little bit of risk, and you need to have other people, you know, help you in that process. And so trying to be involved and kind of lead in that process is, I guess, why I'm thinking about sticking around. Thank you.
For our mayoral candidates, and we'll start with Dean this time. What do you see as the most important function of the mayor of Charles City?
I think the most important function for the mayor is to be a leader, to work with the council, to try to get some things accomplished that we think are good for the community. It's also to be a good ambassador for the community. I think the mayor's kind of the face of the community, I guess you would say, whether that's with community events or regional events, and I know Mayor Urb has been even very involved on statewide level. So, being the face of the community, I guess, is what I see the mayor doing. I've been in my job for, like I said, for forty years, and so I'm ready to kind of cut back a little bit and have some more time to be able to do this job. I didn't, wasn't really interested in doing it when I was working full-time, because I do think, like I say, the mayor has to be visible. I think I'll have the time to do that now, and I think that would be my idea of what the mayor is, is he's the leader, and he's the ambassador.
Matt, same question.
I got to agree with Dean on a lot of what he said. I believe the mayor is basically the face of the city. And you got to work with council, I mean, you basically set the agenda when you do that, and the council's the overall deciding factor. But I do agree, I believe you got to present yourself in a well manner, and be the leader of people. I also do believe it's, as he also stated, it is a lot of time that you got to invest into it. I do invest a lot of time in my job currently, right now, and as mayor, I would also, as he's talking about, that he's starting to unwind at an older age and being a part of his career, I'm in a good spot in my career now, to where I can move forward being younger. So, same but opposite sides of the spectrum, so that's where I stand.
I'm told, everybody can hear you pretty good, except Jerry, we need you to speak up a little louder, otherwise we'll try our spotting microphone. We'll see how this works. Starting off with Matt again here. How have you prepared yourself for the role of mayor?
The way I prepared myself for the role of mayor, I've spoken with the former mayor, that kind of got me started out, because I had to see exactly what I was trying to get myself into. And I did my research. As I told you guys, I'm a cop, so anything I do, I investigate it. And so I've read through city code, I've kept up on council meetings through media. I have not attended a council meeting. I've spoken with the city administrator on issues that are projects I'm working on currently now, and observed, and basically I've just researched as much as I possibly could to understand what it takes to be mayor.
Like I say, I was on the council for eighteen years, and that's prepared me pretty well for knowing what goes on and what's involved with being the mayor. I've been in visit with Steve several times, I've visited with Heidi Nielsen, the housing director, I went up to her office and visited with her a time or two. I've been attending all the council meetings and workshops for about the last four to six weeks, just to kind of get up to date on what currently is going on. I think I do have a pretty good history of what has gone on in Charles City, but I think, you know, by going to the council meetings and visiting with some of the department people at city hall, I've kind of gotten myself up to date on what's currently going on. I know Jerry and Delane especially, because they were on the council when I was. The other council members came in when I went off the council, so I don't have maybe quite as much, I mean, I know them well, but I still have the same conversations with them as I do with these two guys who I worked with for several years. So, I guess that's how I think I've tried to prepare myself for the job of mayor.
President State's candidate, you can do the next one. Thank you. The position of mayor requires time to attend PR events and meetings, both locally and statewide. Does your current job allow you, and what is your availability to do so?
Well, I think probably Matt and I both kind of answered that question on the last question, but I say, I'm to the point, Mayor Lee asked me before we started, how old are you? And I said, well, I went to college for seven years, I've been here for forty years, you do the math. I'm to the point in my career where I'm ready to kind of slow down, so I will have more time to do those type of things. Like I said, I know Jim has done a lot of community work, but a lot of out-of-community work. I don't see myself being quite as active as Jim, because I don't think anybody can be as active as you have been in the last several, many years. But I do think it's important, like we talked before, you are the face of the city, you've got to be out there showing your face and promoting your community, letting people know what you've got to offer, and so I think, you know, I plan on having some time to do that, because I am going to, you know, definitely slow down my dental practice. I see Governor Todd is here now. We talked about you earlier, Todd.
With that being said, I do work a lot of hours, but Charles City is within Polk County. I do have a good boss that I work for, a good sheriff, and he likes us to represent during city events and community-oriented things. So I mean, yes, there is a chance that if I were at these events, which I would still come to these events, even however this turns out with us now, but, so I mean, I'm involved in the community with that, as it is, and we do constantly try to be more involved. And the problem, I guess, would come with me is if there's an emergency situation, then I'd have to leave that, but otherwise I'd still be available. If I was working or if not, then, well, if not, then of course we would love to, me and my family, if you'd like to attend events in Charles City.
We'll give them a break for a minute. Delane, what are you most proud of in your past performance at the council?
I'd have to say the work that the council has undertaken the last several years on kind of the nuisance properties and things like that, and the kind of the rental property registration process and inspections and things like that. That is something that had been kind of kicked around for, you know, quite a while, and I was glad that we finally kind of pushed that on to a point where we got it to where we were able to actually, you know, get the ordinance passed and things like that, and I think it's really made a difference. And, you know, we've got some, you know, better quality rules and things out there that people have to adhere to. I remember part of the process of going through that, of looking at some of the pictures that, you know, the city administrators and, you know, building codes and stuff like that would bring to us and show us. I mean, there are places that there were people that were, you know, being rented to, I mean, most of the people in this room wouldn't have put their dog in there, to be honest with you. And it was very embarrassing to say that's in our town. And I felt that we could really do better in that, you know, respect, and I'm really, I'm really proud that we can, you know, that we did that, and we continue to try and, you know, increase that, that type of work, you know, as we go.
Jerry, what are you most proud of in your past performance at the council?
Well, I agree, you've got different levels of things that you deal with, and the nuisances and the rental was something that we had to do something with, and I think we've made progress in that area. I really enjoyed working in the industrial area, the economic development area. We got good, Tim Fox is an AD, Industrial Development Director, and he's done a lot of good work in that area, and we've gone along with a lot of things in the industry, as I mentioned before, Zoetis, and Cambridge, and Metas, and so on. And these organizations may bring new jobs, they may not necessarily bring new citizens, but you're bringing more people in your community. You understand, Charles City's city limits is about this big, it doesn't include Maple Heights, it doesn't include Wedgewood and all these, but we've got a lot of people in this area that helps our community. A lot of the people that work for our community in various communities live outside the city limits, so I look at it as a population base, not as just Charles City. So, I enjoy working with the whole situation and working on those type of projects, and I'm obviously involved, I'd like to watch the finances on the city, and the city is just quite strong financially.
Back to our mayoral candidates, and we'll start with Matt. What are your top three challenges that you see facing our communities today? How do you plan to adapt it?
Top three right now, one, I think it's working on right now, and I think it's going through with the council, where they've just finally turned it, it's basically back to rental property and holding landlords accountable. I believe that's very important, it's going to help clean up our city. A big issue, we got a drug issue in this town, I believe that needs to be addressed, and work with officials, and people who are going to promote us trying to clean this town up, and whether that be stricter ordinances involving these people, or if we can give these people help, I think that's very important. I'm sure everybody knows, everybody's seen it, that we need to nip this in the bud. Third, you know, just continue to work on bringing in more businesses, you know, bringing in more jobs, and, you know, that's bigger, you know, if we can create more jobs, then that creates more positive people and more positive environments with them.
Dean, what are your top three challenges?
Well, you know, I think all three have already talked about the nuisance properties in town, and I think that's something that we need to keep working at. I do think that the council has done a lot of things to address that issue. You're never going to be able to address everything, because one person's gar, you know, Alice is another person's junkyard, so you can't regulate appearance. You can regulate safety and things like that, but just because the person down the street's yard doesn't look as nice as you think it should, there's not really a whole lot you can do about that, except for try to set an example of yourself. I think housing is something that we need to try to address. I know it's hard, because we don't have a lot of vacant lots in our community, or vacant areas in our community, but we have a lot of people who are looking for those homes in the, what I'm told, in the hundred to hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollar range, that just can't find them. They go into a realtor and they say, well, here's one, and here's one, and so they're, you know, we just need to, I think it'd be nice if we had more of those type of housing units available, so that people who do here, work here, have a choice and are able to live here. That being said, I think, you know, we, like Jerry and Delane both said, both Zoetis and Cambridge are expanding, we have Metas is here who is, you know, fairly new. They're all looking for workers. It's not, I mean, we always like to get new industry, but what we really need are workers who can do those jobs. And so we need to try to figure out some way that we can do some type of job training, some type of building people up to these middle skills, so they don't go to work out there for one day, and, you know, a day and a half later, say, well, you know, this is way too hard for me, I'm out of here, I'm not coming back. And so we need to not only have the jobs, we need to have the people who can do the jobs and be able to train them.
We have a variety of questions here, just in no particular order. It has been said that crime across the country is at an all-time low. Why does it seem like crime in Polk County is rising? Would you consider there to be more crime going on right now? What would you do to help? We'll start with Dean.
I guess I don't know if there's more crime, Matt probably does. I don't know if there's more crime in Charles City than there is in other places. Like I say, you read about bad things happening everywhere in our state, and in our country, and in our world. So, yeah, I mean, there's definitely crime in Charles City. A lot of people think that crime comes from the housing program that we have. I guess I don't, I think, you know, there's people that maybe came in on that housing program who aren't our ideal citizens, there's a lot of people who came in on that housing program who are very productive, good citizens of Charles City. You just look at our schools and see all these kids that are going to our schools and getting a good education. So, yeah, I think there's crime in Charles City. I guess I don't know if it's worse than other places, but like Matt talked about earlier, there's always something that we need, we can always improve upon the law enforcement area. area.
Matt?
Yes, typically, we do have more crime than we should for the small community that we live in. We do typically have more crime than, for the community that we live in. The way to combat that is, a problem again, like I mentioned prior, it has to do with drug use. You've got people who do drugs, who don't want to work, who don't want to be productive, but you've got to find something to do somewhere. And for some reason, we have people that tend to... And to com- com- combat, what we can do is, we stand behind our police department, like I said, we need to look at maybe strengthened ordinances, work on where these places, where the crimes actually occur, where these people are living. And basically, they need to be held accountable for what they do. Now, whether we need to be talking to magistrates, how we can give tougher penalties, or actually hold these people accountable, that's how you battle that. Basically, when they commit a crime, they need to be, I don't want to say punished, but they, again, be held accountable. That's what gets them to stop doing it in the community, and if they don't like it, then go to another community. Because all they are is going to be a drain on our community and continue to do bad things. And understand, not everybody's bad in this community. The people you deal with, that's about 10%, I just happen to deal with quite a bit. And I'm not even saying they're bad people, they make bad choices, is what happens. But we don't want people making bad choices in our community. So, there we are with that.
Stay up, this next one's going to be starting you. Oh, Fitzpatrick, you're writing this. Race relations are a big topic nationally. What will you do as mayor to make Charlestown a welcoming place for minority populations?
It's just with anything. I grew up here in Charlestown. My generation was raised that you, racism, it's working on being, working on being so it doesn't exist. So, the way it's presented through, uh, with the media and news, I think it's overshadowed. I'm not saying it doesn't exist, but I do think we do got a good community. And as generations continue and we continue to fight against racism, race, culture, what people do, that doesn't define who a person is themselves, it's just, you know, any way you look. I mean, I'm a cop, I'm prejudged from that. So, you just accept people for who they are, and you accept productive people, and that's what we just strive for in a community, to accept everybody who's willing to be a productive member of society.
Can you hear me all right? Yeah, I guess I, well, I think, as Matt kind of touched on a little bit, I drive by, we live up by Lincoln School, and you drive by Lincoln School a lot of times out on the playground, and you see the white kids, the Filipino kids, the black kids are all playing together. I think the problem is us, we don't play together with the black adults as well as the flat and white and Filipino kids play together. So, hopefully, as they grow up with this kind of environment, they'll be less racism because they're just figured, they know these other kids are just like them. I think some of the times racism is preconceived notions, we stereotype people, and we think that, oh, that person is that race, so they must be this way. And that, like Matt said, that's not true. Everybody's, everybody has their own individual goodness or badness within them. And so, I think just continuing to try to see all different races working together, you were saying more different races working in our community, see those people working together, and hopefully socializing together. You know, the bridge is, you know, the group that, I think is the group that is doing the, you know, trying to bridge the gap of racism. And so, I think there's, you know, there's people trying to promote that, but I think it's, I think we could use our kids as an example.
Pass it down to Jerry. Hope for if you're going to be asked this next question. Sorry, Jerry, you won on the speaker. I hope that, we got a short in it, that's our issue, so that's why I'm afraid to get it out of here. If you were elected, what would you do for the youth of this committee, community?
Well, number one, I'd like to bring back C A B, but that's not going to happen. I think, you know, you've seen that, a little bit strange for you, but when C A B was here for like 17 years, we've had so much feedback on that, on people that made it pass through Charlestown for one week from Hawaii or wherever, and we made it impacted, the whole community made that impact with all the help we got. But I think we need to, we need to make more opportunities for young people, whether in jobs, NIAC right here, I think there's going to be a lot of opportunities for welders and the two-year course people, a two-year college course or a training course, because that's an area I think that will really run short. I've talked to people in the industries here, and they, they need welders, they need these carpenters, they need these kind of people, so maybe we can help in that area as well. And yes, back to housing, that's always a real problem. Charlestown as a city is not going to create housing. We can work with developers and help, help them, and work with them to, to bring in developments, but then, and we have done that, and we need to do more of that, because we do need the housing, which will bring in people, which will bring in young people, and I'm trying to get back to your question.
Delane, I'm looking, what would you do for the youth of this community?
That's a topic that has come up, you know, several different times over the years that I've been on the council. You know, we've all heard it around town, you know, you talk, you know, strangers, somebody comes into town, asks a young person, "What is there to do in this town?", the typical response is, "Nothing." I know a lot of the church youth groups try real hard to organize things. You know, I know through the, you know, the park and rec department, you know, they, they try and organize the, you know, Little League and, you know, and all that sort of stuff. You know, to me, that's always been a real tough nut to crack, because I know with my own kids, you take them to something that you thought they were absolutely going to enjoy, and they were bored out of their heads, they didn't, you know, they didn't like it. And trying to guess what, you know, young people want and what they want to do. And, you know, I gotta say, kids nowadays want different things than I wanted when I was a kid, you know? And to me, I wish I had an answer to questions like that, because I wouldn't stand here, I'd be someplace else doing something else, probably making lots of money, telling people what to do. But it's, it's something I think we need to continually work on, that whatever we can do as a community, I don't know, it's just the city, you know, the school, whatever, as a community, I think we all need to try and work on those types of things. And I, you know, I think we need to have more discussion, you know, about it, and get, you know, get kids involved, you know? You know, I know, like at the school board now, they've got a junior, you know, or a student representative, you know, on that. You know, I, I think it's, it's something we just need to continue to work on, to see what, you know, what we can do to promote, you know, a better life for our kids in our community.
Dean, same question.
Well, like Delane says, I think it's a moving target. Like he said, what was fun for us when we were kids is not fun for kids now. I also think if you go to pretty much any community, the kids there will tell you, "There's nothing to do in this town," no matter which community you're talking about. They always want, you know, to do something different, and that's fine. I think we need to involve kids to let you know what they want and what can be done to help them. But I also think, I also look back on some of the projects we've done to help kids, the skate park being one of them, that was a big, you know, we need a skate park, we need a skate park, it was popular for about a year, and now it's, although I think it's been painted recently, but before that it was kind of in ruins. There's been several organizations that have started for kids that were really strong when they started. When that group of kids who started it moved on, the next group behind them, that wasn't their deal. And so, again, it kind of faded a little bit. So, I think to make things that are popular for kids, you have to talk to the kids and see what they want. Because like I say, it's different from Delane night to the kids now, but it's different from the seniors to the freshmen. And so I think, you know, every, every group of kids is probably going to have different ideas, but maybe trying to incorporate them to help them accomplish their ideas is the best thing.
And Matt? Well, being close to a kid myself, what kids nowadays like and what they're being known to be is digital, everything's digital now. But I do believe we still need to provide options for them. And I think, you know, as he brought up the skate park, yes, I'm being utilized now, it will come swing back around. So, it's great we have that in our community. It's great we have the kayak course, if we can utilize that more, you know, maybe at some point set up to where we have instructors who teach these kids the safety of kayaking and being on the river, I think that'd be great. If we can utilize Wildwood more, maybe start a big golf program. I think we will always need, as a community, to provide kids, whether it's young kids, middle-aged kids, teenagers, give them an opportunity to have that, to have, let them have the ability to be able to do stuff outdoors and be part of the community. And that's even community service stuff, if they can see what we do. The thing I've talked about in the press and when I've talked about my Facebook page is, one thing I'd really like to see for high school students is get somebody on so they can maybe sit through a trimester at night of seeing what council does, seeing what the mayor does, kind of shadow there, and where I stand with that, because none of us are going to live forever, these kids today are going to be the leaders of our society. So, that's what I'd like to see.
Matt, again, right back to you. What are your thoughts on how to encourage employees of our industries to live in Charlestown?
I've thought about this one, and continuing on, Charlestown, we need to focus on Charlestown right now, and we need to get the people in Charlestown to work. So, I think if we advertise more, maybe partner with the community, create job sites somehow, be involved to get people within our community to work. Before, we focus on bringing in people from out of town to do the jobs that people in Charlestown could work. And as far as the housing part, people are adults, I think finding their own places to live. If they need help, they can come to us, but outside of that, they should be able to figure it out on their own.
Well, I, as I mentioned before, I think part of the problem is we don't have the housing availability that some of the workers that come in from out of town to some of our industrial areas are looking for, there's just not many choices. I think the other thing we need to do, and we talked about, you know, the riverfront, the bike trail, we need to have things in our community that people are looking for when they're looking for a community to live in. You know, some people want it, you know, they say, "Oh, you don't have this, you don't have this, well, I don't want to live there." So, more amenities, I guess you would call it, that we have, TLC is an example, we have a licensed daycare center, that a lot of people coming into town from other places, say they come from the east coast or wherever, that's just standard where they come from. And so, we need to have those type of opportunities, so when people do come to Charlestown, they say, "Wow, you've really, you know, you've got this," or, "I like your schools, and I like this, I would want to live here," as opposed to saying, "Oh, you don't have this, you don't have this." Well, I think I'll go look someplace else that does have it, even though I'm not going to work here. Problem is, is that, you know, it's so easy for people to live in Mason City, Waverly, even Cedar Falls, and just commute with the highways where they are. And again, people moving here from other bigger cities, if they have to drive for 30 minutes, they think that was great compared to what they used to drive where they, you know, maybe came from. So, I think we just have to make our community attractive to people who are coming in, provide the amenities they're looking for.
Jerry, Delane, you should count on that question a little.
No, I think everything has been said that I can take off.
It's, I guess I'd just kind of, kind of reiterate what, you know, Dean said. I've talked to a lot of the HR people from, you know, several different businesses in town, and a lot of times what it amounts to is if the husband comes to work at Zoetis or Cambrex or someplace like that, you know, they come to town, they like the town and everything like that, but all of a sudden, you know, their spouse is like, "Well, jeez, there's nothing really to do here, you know, for me," and things like that. And I know it's really tough when you're sitting at the city, you know, council level to look at spending money on things that amount to amenities, because there's, there's so much pressure on the budget to, you know, provide the necessary services, it's real hard to think about spending that money on, say, the riverfront or the bike trail or something like that. But you got to look at the whole thing as a big picture, and you have to be able to provide that if you're going to remain viable and continue to try and move forward and survive as a community. And with things that are going on at the state level and the national level and things like that, these budgets in our, our smaller communities are going to get squeezed and squeezed and squeezed even more, to the point where it could be very difficult just to provide the necessary services, let alone anything beyond that. So, it's going to be very interesting as time goes on here to, to try and figure out that puzzle of how you make everything work.
Matt, you have a chance on a question there. Next question, and we'll start with Matt. With budget cuts throughout our government, do you think job sharing of another town is possible, and something our town should consider?
Job sharing. Sharing city administrator, sharing city engineer. Oh, good job sharing with that. With budget cuts, no, I think we have a good enough city, a big enough city to where I don't think you'd be able to swing that. I think, like I said before in the last, I think Charlestown needs to focus on Charlestown. And what we have here, I think it allows us to be productive as it is without having somebody have to take on more of a workload, because anybody who's involved in city, county government, it's a lot of work behind the doors that people don't see. And I think with each respective title, I think it's enough, and then they can focus on their one city, and then they don't got to be focusing on two.
Dean?
I think the job sharing part is kind of a tough one. I know the county shares the county engineer with Chickasaw County, and that seemed to work out well. At one time, we shared our superintendent with Riceville, that didn't work out so well. So, I think they found that there was, you know, too much to do in one community to be sharing it in two communities. So, I think you kind of have to pick and choose if you're going to try to share people. But one thing I think you can share is resources. When I was on the council, we started the Cedar Valley Transportation Center. That center houses city, county, and state employees all in the same building. I think that's a great sharing opportunity, that they can share space, they can share mechanics, they can share personnel. So, that's a great way to share, it's been a plus for everybody. But you don't want to share people that ends up, like Matt said, spreading them too thin, where they can't really do the right job in either place. But there are maybe some personnel sharing, but I think the biggest thing is more in, in resources and opportunity sharing, building sharing, things like that, equipment sharing.
Jerry, Delane, you want to make any comment towards that?
No.
Thanks, Jerry. To me, you know, I think anything like that needs to be looked at, needs to be talked about. As I just said, these budgets are going to get to the point where you don't want to talk. No, but anyway, you know, the budgets, I think, are going to force us to look at those things. Whether it's truly a good idea or not remains to be seen, and I think it depends on what it is. But I think it's going to force all of us to look at things differently than we ever have in the past. And I think that's just what's coming down the fight, you can't continue to do things like you've always done. And, you know, whether that, you know, involves trying to have an administrator share, you know, another city, or our water superintendent, you know, take care of a water facility in another community, or the wastewater treatment plant, you know, it, it may come to that. Do I think we have to? At this point, no. But I think those are options you need to leave on the table. I don't think anybody at this point can say, "No, we're not going to do that." It's, I don't think it's realistic.
Yes, sir.
I had a thought, anyway. I want to follow up a little bit of what Dean said. I don't know if everybody is fully aware of the Cedar Valley Transportation Center out south of town. That has been tremendous. And Dan Barrett, I've seen him earlier, is here, he was very involved in working that and getting it put together. But we do, we, being the city, the county, the state, all have pluses on that. We, I've talked to some mechanic, our city mechanic, they got a big job, they need two people, they just flip them back and forth and help each other out. people, they just put back and forth and help each other out, and it's not on a time card basis, they're there to work. And then, we have equipment to share, so that kind of sharing has been great there, we need to do more of that, more in resource part than personnel. But, and we tried, we're working with the schools and trying to find these locations, sometimes they work, sometimes they don't, but I think we need to keep looking and keep working with that in mind, because, again, as budgets get tighter and your towns get smaller, why, we have to utilize the facilities that are available.
Next question, we'll start with Dean. Do you have an agenda for the current Clarkview apartment clientele?
I think that's a pretty broad question, I think it goes back to our comments we made earlier about defeating racism in our community. I talked to Heidi, and we have two housing programs, we have public housing, which is Cedar Terrace South, Cedar Terrace North, and Morningside, which is out by Clarkview. Those are facilities that are on a housing program. Then we have the Section 8 voucher program, which is, a person acquires a voucher and they can go rent from any place they want to, if that landlord will accept that program. So, to say that, you know, we have a problem in one area, I think you have to look, you have to be real careful when you say, is that person on a public housing program, or are they just renting from a landlord who lets anybody rent there? I think you have to place some of the burden upon the landlords, and the council has done that recently by making the landlord to be a little bit more responsible for who they rent to. So, we also have had, I don't know, I guess I don't know chief where we're at currently, but Bill Better was our community officer, who worked with not only the, he worked with the schools, and he also worked around in the community, particularly out of the, on the Clark Street area. And I think that was a big plus to provide some communication between the police and the residents, before it was a confrontational episode, to try to make some kind of communication before those confrontations arise.
Matt?
Okay, with Clarkview AK, it's Casa now, they go by Casa Apartments. That's not our only problem in Charles City, yes, we do get called out there as law enforcement, but I mean, what we've all already talked about with this new ordinance being passed, that's what's gonna be holding people accountable. So, we are moving forward with that. So judging of that as a whole, we can do that, I mean, some people choose to live out there, but like I said yesterday, one of our crime, one of our upper crime areas where we do tend to go as law enforcement. But ultimately, we gotta stay away, it's not, we can't just, we're not gonna burn it down or anything like that, it can't be, you can't say that, it can't be shut down. They actually have a manager out there right now that's trying to actually clean it up. So throughout time, if we just support our police, when they do get another officer that investigates people who actually violate the terms of the voucher, then that's how we combat that, we just gotta have, you gotta have support from your police.
All right, Matt, that's your turn. Are you aware of and do you support the anti-drug amendment to the rental ordinance submitted by the local soap bar?
I do, I read the ordinance, and I think it would be definitely a good thing to be put in front of the city council, and again, that's another thing that gives us tools as law enforcement to gear crime. People who do drugs are gonna, that's already committing crime itself, and if that can help clean up our community, I think it's a very good thing.
Dean?
I guess I'm not familiar with that ordinance or what, you know, what's involved with it, but I do agree with Matt that, you know, if we can do things that help prevent people from committing crimes, and drugs are certainly one of the things that lead to that, it's a positive step. Like I said, I don't know the specifics of the ordinance, you know, on the surface, it sounds good if it's gonna help to prevent drug usage, but without knowing the specifics, I guess I don't know if I'm supportive of it, but I'm certainly supportive of the concept. It's like you say, like Matt says, if we can give our police force and our sheriff's office more tools to work with, that's, that's good.
All right, I got you, Dean. Is there a conflict of interest, and this is for, this was directed for Mr. Lubin, but this is for both of you to respond to, whether you think this is or is not an issue. Is there a conflict of interest in working for the county and running for the mayor of Charles City?
I don't think so. I don't know why that would be a conflict of interest if, you know, if you were, if you were the local police chief and was running for mayor, that might be a different story. One, Marcy works with the community foundation, she has an office down to Chamber, and somebody said, was that a conflict of interest with Marcy working for the Chamber? And I thought, no, why would that be a conflict of interest? I guess I would say the same thing about Matt, him being a sheriff's deputy in the county has no bearing on whether he should or should not be the mayor of Charles City.
I believe Dean addressed that pretty well, I did do some checking before I decided to go ahead with this. Basically, there is no conflict, it'd be no different if the city officer wanted to be part of the board supervisors, if they wanted to run for county supervisor. Basically, what would happen is, if there came a point where there might be a conflict, I would check with the city attorney. If they wanted to not comment on something, or not be part of something, then I wouldn't be, so that's where we stand with that.
I suppose stay up.
Okay.
What should the city's role be in a renovated North Grand building project?
This would be five hundred grand in a former middle school. Right now, I guess it depends what it's gonna be used for. If it's something that is gonna be pertaining to the city, then the city should look into being part of it. If it's something private, then it should be handled privately. It depends whatever it's gonna be to assist the city in making it a more productive area.
I was, when the high school opened, or new middle school opened, and the North Grand Building became vacant, I was on the committee that was tasked with trying to find what could be done with that area. When Charlie Thompson kinda made a bid, the school board accepted his bid to possibly take over that building, that committee kinda dissolved and became inactive. But, when I was on that committee, I went to the city council, I said, you know, this is not a city issue, this is not a school issue, this is a community issue, and I think that building is a community issue. And so, sure, the school board owns it right now, but I think the solutions there have to involve the school and the city, and, you know, community revitalization, the Chamber, the Lions Club, the Rotary Club, everybody. This is a community asset that we have, and we wanna continue to be an asset, so, yeah, I don't think the city's gonna take the lead on it, but the city definitely needs to be a player because it is a community, a community asset.
We'll direct this question at our two incumbent council members. Starting with Jerry. What can be done, if anything, about the smell coming from Simply Essentials?
Well, I've smelled that occasionally, I've heard a little bit about it, because I know the city has talked to them when it's happened. What I'm aware of is it's not an overriding major, major factor, but it's something that we keep our fingers out and try and keep it under control. They've had, particularly when they first got started, we had a couple times when it was a very obnoxious smell. But I think, and I may be wrong, but what I've been hearing lately, I think it's been under pretty good control. But you can, if you drive right by it sometime, you can smell, but I don't, I don't live in that neighborhood, but I haven't seen it overly offensive or frightening.
I guess to me, that's where it comes back to, you have your code and your ordinances, and you just need to enforce those. You don't wanna be overly obnoxious with it, but that's why they're there, you know, that's why we need to, you know, enforce what we've got out there. And I know this has been a topic of conversation, it's kinda come and gone depending on what's going on up there, or where they're at in their process, and it seems like it kinda goes away for a while, and then it comes back as far as people mentioning it. So I'm not sure what's changing or what's going on up there with the business. Frankly, I know they're not quite up to speed yet, so I don't know if they've got all their equipment a hundred percent in place and everything's finalized with where they're at, but, you know, to me, that's, that's where the city just has to enforce the ordinances that are out there, and, you know, hold the business accountable.
Either the mayoral candidates wish to count on that question.
Yeah, I can, yeah, I smelled it myself a time or two, and it is a rotten smell, but it doesn't stick around, and I know the city does act on it when it's reported, and as Delane said, you know, they're working on it, they're working progress. One thing we gotta remember about that building, I know it's not an ideal location or the best looking thing, but the positive thing is we got from that now, it's created jobs, it's a functioning business, so we should be proud of that. Something we are gonna have to look at, though, is the people need to realize we're across the street. Dean, I can agree with that, Dean's probably the solution for that.
Yeah, just a quick, I guess I pretty much agree with what's been said, I think there's probably some growing pains of a new industry, but we do have ordinances and rules, and they need to be enforced, you need to, you know, maybe sometimes gradually work into that enforcement. But we do need to let them know what the concerns are and help them in addressing those concerns, and I think there are some, but I'm hoping, like I say, as they grow, those concerns will become less.
I would note that Simply Essentials has been made aware of issues, and they have been working with city officials to try and work in that part as well. I think most of it came from certain trucks that have stayed there too long, and they have agreed that they will move those within a two-hour period, Steve?
Less than twenty-four hours, yeah.
Okay. We'll start with Matt on this one. Are there any city services you would like to see added or removed, and if so, why?
No.
Dean?
I'm glad you had to go first, because I would kind of agree with Matt's comment, but I don't really think, I don't think that's a question that lets, you kinda knew it was coming, that you can really kind of think of in thirty seconds, so, I don't, I guess I don't see anything that I think is we're really missing, or that we really need, or that we really don't need. We've addressed some of those issues over the years. I see former fire chief Roy Swiparat back there, we, you know, we talked about the fire department when I was on the council, that has since kinda become a, what's the word, chief?
Public safety.
Public safety department, that includes both the firemen and the policemen, and I think it's, I think it was an improvement in how that all works, but, you know, to say that I can think of something to need to add or eliminate just right off the bat, I guess I don't know of anything either.
This will be for all four candidates, and we'll start with Delane, go to Jerry, and then we'll go to Matt and Dean. So, Jerry, how do you plan, how do you stay in touch with the constituents? How do you get input and feedback from them?
I try to talk to people whenever I can, I've given a lot of people around, you know, my home number, it's in the phone book, you know, people know where I work, and I apologize for not saying that earlier, I work for First Citizens National Bank, I've worked there for twenty-two years now. You know, I've had people call me at the bank, I've had people email me at the bank, I've had people catch me at the gas station when I'm putting gas in my car, I've gotten into conversations up at, you know, Derailed and other places, I will talk to pretty much anybody, anytime, as long as they wanna have a, you know, a decent conversation, and actually have a conversation, you know, to talk about something, an issue, or whatever. You know, I've tried to make myself as available as I can, I've got a lunch appointment next Tuesday with an individual to discuss one of the topics we've talked about up here. I'm gonna do that, you know, next Tuesday over in Mason City. So, I don't know a hundred percent what else to do, I, you know, I've always tried to make myself available if someone has a, you know, has a question or a comment.
Jerry?
Well, kinda like Delane, the door is open, the phone number's there, I don't reject talking to somebody in a proper location and proper attitude. One thing I don't respond to is not on a sweater, or frankly, I can't respond to them, but if somebody wants to say something and they're not willing to identify themselves as to what their concern is, then I don't buy that, that's just my opinion. But, I always try and give back to people when they got a question, and truthfully, I don't forget a lot of them, I'm not near as much, as many as an answer than I thought there would be, but the door's open, so I'm willing to look at the people, the concerns that they have.
Matt?
One more thing, many times people will call me and say, what's your council meeting? I wanna come to a council meeting. What I initially tell them, well, what's the problem? And then, you go to your department head, you go to a staff level person, and get some particulars worked out. You can't come to a council meeting and stand up and get your question answered just like that, because it's gonna have to be more into it than that. So you gotta build your case a little bit before you're gonna get to something satisfactory.
Matt?
Same thing, I'm open door, call me by phone, hit me up in the store, hit me up if I'm on duty. A big part that's growing, especially with my generation, social media, Facebook, Twitter, if you wanna tweet. Email, you know, however you wanna get ahold of me, or, and then even out in the public, I encourage people, I encourage people, you know, talk to your councilman, talk to your mayor, talk to your people on your boards, if they have an issue, let them know, because a big thing that people need to realize is communication's key, and if you don't speak, then nobody knows what your problem is or what your concern is. So a big part, obviously, what these guys do now, what we're trying to do, the key is listening, listen to what they have to say, that's a hundred percent of what people want from you, is they want you to listen to them and hear them out.
Dean?
I'll just add right on to that, I agree. Jerry said that, you know, sometimes people say, why would I come to a council meeting because I got a gripe? Well, that's not where you get your gripes solved, it's by talking to the mayor, the city administrator, talking to one of your council people, and then getting the information. I think a lot of people have concerns about different things because they don't know all the information. Once you can listen to somebody and explain all the different parameters that go into that complaint, if you wanna call it that, they may not be happy with your answer, but at least they understand why the answer is what it is. And so, the mayor does have an office, that, which the councilmen do not, so I think the fact that the mayor has an office in city hall does make the mayor a little bit more accessible to the public than probably what the, what the council people are, because like Jerry Delane both said, you know, they see people at the store, or at their, you know, job sites, or whatever. The mayor does have an office, and so, I think the fact that that's available is a big deal, because it does, it is important to listen. I'm not, I've never been quite the technological person my wife is, but she kinda got me started on Facebook during this mayor campaign, so I have been doing a little bit of that, and so I think that's another good way to, to communicate, because like Matt said, that's what people of his generation, that's how they communicate a lot of times, and so, I think that's important to, to think about that as a form of communication also.
We have more questions than we have time for, we're gonna, there's one last question, but I would encourage you, we tried, tried to get into touch on aspects of all remaining questions, but I encourage you, visit with the candidates, ask your questions that they haven't been asked, get the answers you want. They're very accessible, they'll be available for a little bit right after the meeting. Get your questions answered. We're gonna end tonight before we go to our closing statements, so with a final question for our mayoral candidates, and I can't remember where I started first, so we'll start with Matt. What would you like your legacy to be as mayor of Charles City?
Well, hopefully I don't burn it to the ground. No, I would just like to see an increase in the job force, you know, good productive working people, I would like to see our community continue to move forward, and like I said, it's a beautiful community if we just continue on projects with that. And, I would just like to see our community stay, or come together as a whole, and, you know, branch out and do new things. Bike trail, I know that's a very hot topic amongst people, and where it started, and where we can grow with that, and that, even if it gets to the final, maybe... And that, even if it gets to the point where maybe we can't start partnering with the county and see if they'd be involved or the state on that level. I'd just like to see things keep moving forward and hopefully be a positive mayor if I'm elected.
Dean?
Yeah, I, you know, basically the same thing. You want things to, to move forward, I think. One of the things that I'm concerned about, I, and again, it's probably similar in other communities, is, again, I talked about Marcy, she was the community foundation person in Charles City, and they were a party, a sponsor at Party in the Park this summer, and they had a board up that said, what up, what, something that you're glad you live in Charles City. And they had people put up with things like, I like the river, I like, the people are friendly, dah dah dah. But then some people would come up and say, I can't think of anything I like about Charles City. That was really disheartening to me, to have people that live in our community that just think, well, this isn't a very nice place to live. I guess, I would hope my, part of my legacy would be to improve the attitude of some people in town who are always, always can find what's wrong, don't wanna be the solution to what's wrong, they just wanna point out what's wrong, but not looking at what's, what they can work on to be better. Just going back real quickly to one thing Matt said about the youth, involving them in community service. I think if we can get our youth involved in doing things in the community, working on projects, now they have an ownership of that project. If they helped go out and, and, you know, work on a section of the bike trail and, you know, maybe did a cleanup day or something on the bike trail, now they like that bike trail, they like, they're proud of the fact that, look how good this bike trail looks, I was part of that. And when their friends come out and throw their McDonald's papers out there, they're gonna say, ah, you know, this is, this is our bike trail, let's, let's treat it like that. So I think involving the youth in community service is a big deal, to allow them to be feel ownership in our community.
Would you pass the microphone down to Jerry? We're gonna give each candidate, they have up to three minutes to give their closing statements. You don't have to use all three minutes, but you have three minutes if you'd like.
That work? I didn't think it was working, okay. Well, I think it's been a good discussion. I thank everybody for that work and putting this on, and I thank you for attendance. I think a lot of progressive things have been put out tonight and talked about by all four of us, and I guess that would be my closing statement, let's stay with the program and let's get some new programs, and let's stay aggressive, let's be positive. I agree with Dean 100%. We have a minority few that just like to harp all the time, but you gotta be working to be part of the solution, you can't just be negative. So we don't like bad rumors, we don't like, I mean, I know Facebook is good, but you're gonna have people accountable when, when they're saying things. So you can't always believe everything you see, but at least check it out and see what's going on, and do whatever you like to do, and areas you like to work, to help make Charles City a better place.
Delane?
Basically, number one, I'd like to thank all of you for being here. I'd also like to thank my employer, First Citizens, for allowing me the time. Turn it off. Thanks, man. Anyway, allowing me the time to continue to serve, you know, in the capacities that I do. They're very good as far as letting me, you know, like today, I was back here in town by four o'clock for a, a meeting that I was at with Gloria, and came straight from there to here. But anyway, you know, I thank them for that. Also wanna thank the people of Charles City that have voted for me in the past for city council. That means a lot to me. It's very important, and I try and, I try and uphold that as best I can. You know, there's very few meetings that I've ever missed over the years as far as the council. Been on a lot of different committees with Mark and stuff like that, a lot of people in town. Hopefully, whenever I'm on something, I'm putting my best effort into it. And I figure if you people are likely to do it, I'm gonna show up and I'm gonna do the best job that I can. And that's all I can promise you that I will do. Also, wanna thank one important person, is my wife. There's a lot of time that goes into all these meetings, and there's a lot of meetings to on, the council meetings, and different committees and things like that to get on that most people out here don't, you know, don't realize. And, you know, I have a lot of admiration for the people that are willing to stick their neck out on the school board, the supervisors, wherever it might be, because, and, you know, Todd, you know, back there being involved is our, you know, state rep. You know, that takes a lot of time, and you're giving up your life, some of your life, to do that, to serve other people. And that means a lot to me. So I'll just shut up now. Thank you.
Matt?
Well, I'd like to thank all of you people for coming. And kind of what Delane said, I mean, as mayor, I see it as a service to your community, and you wanna try to represent that as best as you possibly can. And I also encourage people, if anybody has any questions about city government, or if they ever had questions about wanting to run or anything like that, if you have the urge, if you wanna do it, you know, do your homework and go for it. I cannot say for sure what a mayor does 100%, because I'm not been in that position, but if elected, I will give it my all and do the best I can. And it'd be an honor if I could have any of your votes come November 7th. Thank you.
And Dean?
Well, as I mentioned before, you know, I've been on the council before, I kind of know how city government works. I've been on many boards in town, I've been on the library board, I've been on the arch council board, I've been on the church council board. So I know a lot of things that go on in Charles City. I've been going to the council meetings here for like, say, the last four to six weeks, so I'm kind of up to date on what's going on currently in the city. And like I said, I, you know, I think I'm gonna have more time come January, and so I think I'll have the time to do that. So I think all those things add up to allowing me to be a good representative as a leader and ambassador for Charles City. You know, Jerry talked about CABA. We had a great ride here this summer. My parents, when they used to come up and visit us, all these people that come from out of town say, you guys have such a cool community, I love it here. It's pretty, it's, the people are friendly. Like I say, my goal is to get our residents to say that same thing, and when they go out and talk about our community, they say, you guys should come to Charles City, it's a really nice place to live, you'd like it there. So I, again, I thank the AEW and Be the Bridge and the Chamber for providing this forum-type thing to read all, who all came. I've been out there before, listening to these guys up here. It is easier sitting out there, but it wasn't quite as bad as I thought sitting up here did, so thanks to everybody for coming.
As you said, this is not an easy thing to do, and to stand up and be willing to serve your community, open yourself up to comments of all kinds. I've been covering and working with city government for 30 years, and it is not easy at all. So I applaud you gentlemen for running. Again, give a round of applause for our candidates. Let's start with Dean and go down the row. Is there a Facebook or a website that you can go to for more information?
There you go. And I do read it. She just operates, and I do read it.
And mine's Matt Lovett from there.
I don't have a Facebook page, so...
I don't either. I've got email, you've got email.
Yeah. If anybody wants my email address, let me know, here, I'll get it to you. Rather than just stand up here rattled off, you know. I usually do my work one because that's where I spend more of my time than anyplace else, so.
Dean, if we didn't get your question tonight in one form or another, we apologize and really encourage you to come, talk to the candidates one-on-one, get to know them before you cast your vote. Election is December, or September, November, September. Don't wait till the September. Absentee validating is also available right now. So you don't have to wait, but it's up to our voters, you guys make the final decision. So whether you're happy or happy, you're city government, you're the ones who have the final decision for that. Thanks for coming, encourage you to meet the candidates one-on-one, and see if...